City Council selected the project in April of 2020 as part of its application to Dallas County for the CDBG grant funding. A reinforced concrete sidewalk, thirty-one barrier-free ramps, and five pedestrian signal poles for locations within the Forest Old Neighborhood will be constructed under this contract. Also included is pedestrian improvements will be provided at four intersections. Number one, East Center Street and East Freeman Street. Number two, East Center Street and North Forest Lane. Number three, South Alexander Avenue and North Forest Lane. And four, Alexander Avenue and Alexander Court. The project was competitively bid and five bids were received, ranging from $200,685 to $376,355. North Star Construction was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. North Star Construction is based out of Fort Worth, Texas. Okay? All right. Item 4C, consider a resolution approving a purchase of fuel products from Jack Ray Oil Company through Tarrant County Cooperative Purchase Contract, number 2022-63, and an estimated total expenditure of $472,780. This is an annual contract, fuel contract, using Tarrant County's Cooperative Purchase Agreement. The agreement includes three options for renewal of twelve months each. The city operates a fuel point for city-owned vehicles at servicing. The city uses approximately eighty-six thousand gallons of unleaded gasoline and forty-four thousand gallons of diesel fuel per year. Jack Ray Oil Company is located in Grand Prairie, Texas. Item 4D. Yes, please.
Given insurance shade of unrest, the energy response to the world and the resultant increase in gas prices, what type of impact do you anticipate that it will have as we move forward?
I expect us to see genuine rising prices in ASA. Want to speak to what we're seeing?
Yes. When I figure the budget out, I look at the Department of Energy's projections, and that's what I go by. And they are rising for the short term, over the next few months, but they are also decreasing in the few months after that. So I get kind of an average over the next year from their projections. And I also checked on market watch to see what the futures contracts were trading so far, and they were in line with the Department of Energy. So it is going to be more expensive next year.
And this is an annual contract?
Yes.
The way the contract is set is just so many cents above or below the OPUS price for the day that we purchase the fuel. So as fuel prices go down, our costs will go down too.
But likewise, if they go up?
Yes, if they go up, ours go up too. It's just the markup is the same.
And one of the trends you'll see when we've had these issues happen in the past is that we start to set up policies where we look for more fuel-efficient vehicles to utilize. One of the areas where you see are police vehicles, which are heavy, high-fuel vehicles, but we are both diesel and regular gas. But as we start to look at some policies, that may be something we want to consider is where we look at energy efficiency vehicles more often or just day-to-day vehicles, because we don't see an end to this anytime soon, specifically with what's going on in the Soviet, before or so.
So no electrical vehicles you're looking at this time?
I would say that there's hybrids. One of the projects, there are lots of projects out there to do different types of alternatives, and I'll talk to ASA some more about it. But we even looked at alternative fuels within other organizations I've been with.
I think it's putting together, trying to put together policy proposals for alternative fuels, particularly vehicles.
Yeah, it's interesting when you look at the desirability of electric vehicles. I heard a statistic from a reliable source in terms of what happens to the state budget in terms of gas and fuel and ink and the registration, the taxes that go into that fund as a result of gas and oil, which is, it's not being refreshed, as it should, because of the purchase of electric vehicles. If you know, in the last legislative session, they tried to pass some kind of a ruling about individuals with EVs have to pay some kind of fee to go into that fund. It did not pass because of the activity. But the interesting fact is, in the state of Texas, there are over twenty million internal combustion engine vehicles, ninety-seven thousand EVs. So there's your balance in terms of how we are going to see the accrual of the gas and oil funds, money going in, and the purchase of electric vehicles as well. And if something doesn't pass in the 2023 legislative session, to have individuals that own EVs pay something toward that fund as EVs continue to grow in popularity, it could be something to consider. It's not going to be major, because when you say twenty million versus ninety-seven thousand, when is that balance going to hit? They're talking like maybe 2035, 2040, you'll see it begin to change. But for the short term, we're looking at gas and diesel, for sure.
We've been fortunate. You go to California and you see five and six dollars a gallon, and so you see more electrical vehicles becoming necessary. So, but we'll keep, as we start to look at our policies, there are a lot of energy efficiency programs that we probably need to start looking at from our buildings to everything else, so we'll talk some more about that. Thank you.
And they still ride bikes.
Is that with or without a motor?
All right. Item 4D, consider a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with Professional Turf Products LP through Buy Board Contract 611-20 and the expenditure amount of $84,422.06. This item authorizes the purchase of Turo Multi Pro 5800 Moore and Arco Thatch 83 Dela Thatcher. Is that the way you pronounce that? Dela Thatcher. In the expenditure amount of $84,442.06. The current Moore has reached the end of its useful life, and new Dela Thatcher attachment is necessary to maintain the athletic fields. There is a budget shortfall of about $13,422.06, which will be alleviated by using reallocated funds due to deferred equipment purchases. The city is using buy board cooperative purchase agreements for the procurement actions. The professional turf product is located and used. As with all equipment, there is a shortfall and shortage of things. Things are costing more, and there's less and less available. So when we get an opportunity, we have to get them. All right. Item 4E, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire equipment for the new fire engine from Municipal Emergency Services, MES, through the National Purchasing Partner Government, NPP Gov., contract number PS200400, any amount of $66,401.06. September 2020, a resolution 2000-06 was passed, authorized the purchase of a new engine. However, the equipment is needed for the apparatus to make it fully functional was not included in the resolution, and that's the stuff that goes inside of it. Sometimes you can move it, but when you're adding additional, you have to buy additional equipment. The total cost of the needed equipment is $66,401.83, and through the cooperative purchase contract, we can satisfy through competitive bid under state law.
Yes. So this was already purchased?
No, we purchased the engine. So we purchased the truck, now we need the stuff that goes inside the truck. All of the equipment.
Okay, because I was just trying to understand in the report, it says not realizing that the equipment wasn't included, the fire department inadvertently proceeded with the purchase.
That's what I read. Right, right. And I worked there with you on that. Yep.
So I just want some clarification on?
How did that happen that way? I see the two people back there who could answer better than I can. They smiled when you asked that question, so do you mind me?
Sure. What had occurred was we did have funding in our fleet replacement fund to replace the engine, and with the resolution, we got that. What didn't occur was the, we had funding in there to replace the equipment. That wasn't added on to it. Because it was right there at the end of a budget year and the beginning of another year, my battalion chief, who was ordering the parts, did realize that he was going over the $50,000, and they had to have council approval. So that being said, we were having, the reason why this occurred was we were having problems in the supply for our thing. We had a hard time getting supplies that would order from one company, and they couldn't get it to us, so then they would work from this other company, which caused it to go over the $50,000.
But it was still purchased before coming to us?
To not correct.
So, Teo, I see, Teo, from my background in federal procurement under the FPRs, what we were looking at, what we're looking at now, and that's not about municipal, but under FPRs, this would be called ratification.
It is yours.
That's what we want to discuss.
We're on the fire equipment purchase, so you've already purchased the equipment?
You'd be correct, Mayor.
So, so Mr. City Attorney, do we need to do anything to change any language here other than just approving it? As I said, under the FPRs, this would be pretty cut and dry as ratification.
It's technically a ratification, yes.
But don't worry about it. Okay.
It was purchased off a buy board.
Right.
So we got, we got the right purchase value. If that were not the case, that might be a different issue. It was off a buy board approved pricing list. It's just, we had an anomaly because of COVID. So when we went to purchase these things, it's normally under fifty, and we've had these price increases that put it over. So when the battalion chief ordered it, he was based on what traditionally was the price and only got the invoice for it, it was more, and so it accumulated over the amount, so.
I think we picked up on that we were approving a purchase after the fact.
Yes, sir. It's technically a ratification, you'd be correct.
So in calculating the annual contribution from various funds to put into Fleet Maintenance Fund, is the contribution based on just the vehicle or is the contribution based on the vehicle plus the cost to make ready the vehicle for service? How does that work?
It would be both, sir, the vehicle plus the vehicle.
Yeah, so we have an equipment fund, a vehicle fund, and so we actually have a formula that I think Ms. Adina has been working on and looking at that has been used for our IT as well as our vehicles. Each year, money goes back into that fund, and we are, you'll see closely, it's going down really fast. And so, Ms. Adina, we were talking about the Vehicle Replacement Fund and the calculation methodology that's been used in the past, and you're working on revamping that. Is the correct answer or not correct answer?
Yes, that is, that is correct. We talked about that fund today. We're looking at how it's being worked, and we're just taking a look at it, and we're kind of revising, updating it. The old methods of how the escalation, there really wasn't an escalation, and I understand that over time, they took out the escalation part of accumulating for it, and so now there is none. So we're going to see how we can get that back in, because every year, stuff goes up.
Yes.
Inflation is, inflation is any way I have to.
Yes.
And with the back orders that we're seeing, it's making even more difficult.
Got you.
We've got something else to address.
No, that was it.
Okay. Item 4F, consider a resolution authorizing bid number RFB 220001, demolition of substandard buildings for real property within the city of Duncanville to bear demolition ink in accordance with the proposed pricing bid tabulation attached here too, and incorporated here as Exhibit A, and the amount not to exceed $77,167.60. For the demolition of substandard structures contract, three bids were received from three vendors, two in Dallas, one from Burleson. They awarded as a master agreement with Garrett Demolition Inc. to assist the city of Duncanville in demolishing both residential and commercial structures that have been determined substandard by the city and ordered demolished by the municipal judge or the city's Building Standards Commission. This generally happens if someone fails to demolish it themselves, and the city has to step in and do it, and then a lien is placed against that property for the amount of that contract. The contract period is for a total of five years with annual renewal option periods. The contract is on an as-needed basis. The awarded amount is in an amount not to exceed $77,167.16. The awarded amount, I just said that, the scope of work for all work completed by the contractor for the project under the scope includes the following: demolish substandard residential buildings, demolish substandard non-residential building, demolish asphalt pavement, demolish concrete pavement, and remove site utilities and cap at right away, and restore site to greenfield condition. I will repeat that this occurs if we have exhausted all other options of working with someone. So this is not the city just going in and doing it. This is in a case where there has been constant contact, and we don't hear a legal process before we ever get to this point. But we want to have a contract when this occurs, and I think the city has had to do that with property that they've acquired before.
It takes months and years sometimes to get to this point.
Absolutely.
Mr. Attorney.
So, and you started to clarify, this was something you said, but to be certain, this is not about a contract that is going to serve an existing demolition order right now. This is in anticipation of some demolitions that may be coming down the road at some point. And my question would be, this used to be a part of the budget of the Public Works Department, that where they actually budgeted about this amount, I think it was about $90,000. So they've gotten away from budgeting, and instead, we're doing it this way?
No, we will still have money in the budget, but we just want to have a contract. One of the concerns that we have, as we talked to Teo and other procurement issues, is, is we want to have contracts in place, because what happens is, if you have a need and there is an urgent situation, because you may have an emergency demolition, if you have a structural that the building official has deemed dangerous, and you have to bring down, well, then you're trying to get an emergency procurement. So what we will have is an open procurement in place to use for those times, and so that's why we wanted to have these contracts set up.
Okay, thank you.
And the demolition will not exceed this amount, regardless of the structure that's being demolished?
No.
Is that, is I understanding?
Uh, no.
No, the only time they come close is if you run into hazardous materials that have to be abated.
Yes, but it's things like that. But generally, we'll try not to do this. We'll hope that we can work through it, because we have a good attorney. 4G, consider a resolution awarding a contract for a construction manager at risk, CMAR, for Harrington Park Improvement to Dean Construction with an estimated amount of $288,000 based on unit price bid. So the Harrington project was included in the 2018 bond election for 2.9 million, including a pavilion and bridge to Waterview Park. The construction manager at risk, or CMAR, allows the city to hire a construction manager who will work with the city's consultant to complete the final construction documents, then provide the city with a guaranteed maximum GMP to complete the project. This allows the city to control the project's cost better and allows the greater control of the subcontractors. The general contract manager at risk will come back to the city council for final approval before any construction commences. The RFQ was published on January 26, 2022, with 105 vendors notified and 35 accessing the bid documents. Four bids were received on March 3. After evaluation of the submitted documents, Dean Construction of Cedar Hill, Texas, is recommended by staff as the most responsive and qualified bidder for the Harrington Park Bond Project. Dean Construction is a local firm that with extensive experience in park construction and most recently worked in the city of Duncanville to add a batting cage at Harrington Park. This is something we are doing, and you'll hear this on other projects. One is construction costs are at an all-time high, and in order for us to get to a point where we can solidify what it's going to cost, we're bringing in a contract manager at risk. We have a very limited staff, and managing this takes that type of expertise. And so this will be the first, but not the last, that you will hear from us. You'll hear more from other projects as we go along, because that is going to be the only way for us to start to get our fixed price. Okay? Question? 4H, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchase agreement with Caldwell, I'm guessing my throat now. Caldwell, sorry, Country Chevrolet LLC through Buy Board Contract 601-19 to approve procurement for six Chevrolet Tahos PBBs, and the total expenditure, that's a lot of money, amount of $465,898. Those large numbers get me every time. This item is authorized for purchase of six Chevrolet Tahos to replace the current police pursuit vehicles in the expenditure amount of $465,898. The vehicles will be replaced, have reached the end of their useful lives as police creatures. However, as often, there is a budget shortfall of about $93,898, which will be alleviated by using reallocated funds due to deferred equipment purchases. The city is using buy board cooperative purchasing agreement for this procurement action. The contract is located in Caldwell, Texas. I can tell you, there is a massive backorder on Chevrolet Tahos vehicles as a whole, and I think we've been waiting at least a year plus, and we have more that we're still waiting for along this line. And so it is just the reality we're in, and the cost are that.
Is the shortfall in large part because of the increased cost of the vehicles?
Yes, everything is costing a lot more than we anticipated.
So, yeah, I noticed that as well. And so the follow-up question is, that shortfall is going to be made up from one fund? For about a hundred thousand dollars short?
Departed equipment.
It will be in front of the fleet rotation?
Fleet rotation.
It'll stay in the same fund. And so what you'll see as we start to talk about our mid-year budget, we have a heavy vacancy rate, and many shortfalls will be covered just based on savings within our budget. So there is not a fund balance discussion that we're having on anything. We are, actually, we look at the monthly budget reports. We're coming in under on many areas.
Remind me how many miles we put in these cars before we turn them in?
It's hours, I'm sorry.
No, no doubt, but also miles. How many miles will we?
It's a combination of hours and miles and the age of the unit. This will be the third year for these units. In previous years, we have only kept them two years, because these vehicles are driven five times harder than your vehicle, than the ordinary vehicle is driven. They will get between sixty, seventy, eighty thousand miles on them. And believe me, this third year, I can, I can tell the difference in holding them over an extra year.
For ratification, I know, oh, I'm sorry.
We're in Annesville, Caldwell County. We used to use down the street, I forgot, Freeman. What's the community update on Freeman?
Freedom did have a contract through Tarrant County in the previous purchase. They no longer have that contract, and I don't believe that they have their fleet, government fleet manager anymore as well.
And I've asked this before, I just wondered, did you explore looking at leasing again over purchase?
We can do that again if you would like. It was, I don't remember, three or four years ago that we?
Right, about three.
That we looked at that. If you would like, we can check into it.
That's something just always kind of consider, just to see if that's.
Yeah.
And I know, I know Chief brought that to us before, and they still weigh that, Chief or Financial. They kind of still, I probably want to always look at it.
We're always looking at it. Enterprise is the main vehicle company that does leasing, and it's generally for cities that have a little bit more of a financial problem. That's their target area, and that's why we haven't been targeted. It is still an option available, but as you can imagine, when we're having problems buying, the same thing's happening with our companies. But I think every year, we will just go and look at what our options are, and maybe there's a combination. The other thing with our vehicles, for folks who's here, is that vehicles never sit idle. So once one crew gets out, another goes in. And so these vehicles are going constantly. In some cities, they have take-home vehicles, and so they sit at least some hours. Our vehicles do not sit, so that is why you'll see this happen.
But in my experience, that you can't keep the patrol vehicle long than three days.
And you really don't want to.
And as alluded to, I think a few moments ago, a couple of years ago, we moved from two to three, and that's what ASA mentioned, where you're starting to see that impact. Because, again, as the city manager just mentioned, whereas some of our partner cities, they have a larger fleet that's not run 24/7/365. Because, I tell you, before I walked over here just now, I was talking to the Lieutenant of Patrol, and we've got more people than cars tonight.
And then, yeah, and then the whole maintenance issue, because maintenance is going to go up the longer you keep it.
And the key, I mean, it's an education for us around the table, it was for me anyway, you know, as below, ASA, sorry, it was below, that the hours accumulation on these vehicles is much more taxing on the engine than the actual driving. And I've encountered this, you know, when we've done 4th of July or something like that, we've got three vehicles out there, the doors are locked, and the engines are running. And I've asked the police officer, are you ready? He says, yep, we gotta keep that engine going, we gotta keep the interior cool, because of the computers that are in there, we have to keep that engine ready to go. It's not a matter of walking in, starting it, hoping it goes. So when those vehicles are on duty at any point in time, they never shut down. And if that's why the hours meter on this is more important, looking at it than the actual miles.
I think for once in a while, they get a little off-road when they're chasing somebody. You know, jumps and curves.
We try to handle them responsibly.
Mr. McNerney.
Thank you, Mayor, because the one thing that I would do want to emphasize is that public safety should be one of our key targets. What we're going to do is, our fleet and stuff, so I appreciate you looking for it.
Well, I'll take it. Mr. Bearcruz.
I was just going to say, as competitive as the area is, when these recruits come or they transfer over, they look at the equipment. And so if we don't have top-of-the-line equipment, we lost right there. So that's another factor to always keep in mind.
So with the delays, what is the anticipated delivery on these six?
Let me see.
Do we know?
It's probably going to be towards the beginning of next year.
Yes, is that bad?
And to add, and how much to finish one out?
That's enough.
That'll, that'll take another couple of months.
If the equipment is available.
Right.
So we're almost two years behind right now, and we're pushing it up to that on the D and E.
Well, Chief, what was said earlier by you about having more officers than vehicles, and if we had a couple of these vehicles who are down on us, just because it's their time to stop operating, do you have a strategy to?
Well, so that's kind of what's occurred at this point. You know, if we had everything up with some minor, you know, issues that we need to get back into service, we'd be okay. But to your point, if we had to double people up, a lot of calls we go on are two-person calls. And some are, some may be one-person call, take a reporter with it. But if we have to double people up, that's, that's our main contingency. We could probably make that to getting another call, or getting another batch of vehicles. But it is getting a little bit darker.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Does this include cost of outfitting the vehicles and adding up?
Yeah, so my understanding of dealing?
Vehicles themselves?
The cost, the estimate that you're, that's up there, and ASA's saying yes. That's everything.
That's the vehicle, all the equipment inside of it, everything.
So one time, you could move them from car to car, but what was smart in the Tahoe, folks, is they changed the shape so it doesn't fit. So if you buy a car, you could just move it over. If a car was totaled, you move it over to that other car. Now what's happening is with the new structure, and they'll change around just enough that you got to buy the additional stuff fresh, so.
And up to less.
Okay. That concludes our briefing of the consent items. Item number two on the agenda in the fourth session is briefing the presentation. We have done, so with that, we're going to go into executive session. I will read the item, and then we clear the room to close the executive session. City Council shall convene to close the executive session pursuant to Section 551.071, Texas Government Code, to discuss and deliberate the purchase, exchange, or value of real property in order to improve the negotiation with the third party for property west of US Highway 67, south of Camp Wisdom, east of Main Street, north of Daniel Dale Road, and to deliberate regarding commercial and financial information from a business prospect and deliberate an offer of a financial incentive to a business prospect pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code. Briefing session is being efficiently recessed at 6:40 PM.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being with us, for your patience and understanding as we cover some important items on tonight's agenda. I am convening our open city council session. The timestamp is 7:48 for the Duncanville City Council meeting for agenda items on Tuesday, the 5th of April of 2022. The pastor that we had invited for our invocation has unfortunately come down with COVID. So I have, excuse me, I have asked Mr. Cooks if he would give the invocation. Please rise.
Let us pray.
Oh Lord, our God, how great is your name in all the earth, how we love you for being our Father, our Savior, and our King. Lord, we ask today that you will give us, grant us the knowledge, the wisdom, to do the work of our city. We pray, Father, for our citizens, our seniors, our youth, and young adults. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you will continue to guide us in the way you would have us to go. We love you for first love in us. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Please draw any pledges for our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Moving on to item number one, our agenda, our reports. And I will dispense with the mayor's report. Sitting in tonight for Ms. Aretha Farrell Benavides is our assistant city manager, Mr. Robert Brown. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to introduce one of our new employees. In the very back, ladies and gentlemen, we have our new chief information officer, Ms. Gwendolyn Spencer. Would you stand, Gwen? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to just briefly share with you some of the happenings that are occurring in various city departments. In our Public Works Department, the East Daniel Dale Road reconstruction and utility improvements. Candlelight was reopened to traffic last week. PaveCon removed the concrete from the southbound Main Street lanes, prepped the subgrade, and set the steel reinforcement. All inlets have been completed for the westbound lanes. And the trail retaining wall and the ramp reconstruction began this week. Additionally, Atmos Gas Service conflicted with the proposed trail. Atmos contracted board the new service this week and removed the conflict. Last week, our Public Utilities Division flushed thirteen fire hydrants, repaired eleven hydrants, and replaced one of our hydrants. They also exercised nineteen valves, repaired one service line, and repaired one water main break. Additionally, they responded to four sewer calls, repaired one sewer main, televised four hundred and seventy-six feet of storm drain lines, and cleared thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five feet of sewer lines. There was also more than twenty-five right-of-way locates completed for contractors, most of which were for fiber optics from AT&amp;T and maintenance work from Atmos. In our Utility Building Department, utility billing is modifying forms such as a utility bill and delinquent notice. This process may take two to three weeks, but it will ensure that the front size of the utility statements is acceptable for all of our customers. In our Parks and Recreation Department, Operation Clean Duncanville will take place this Saturday, April the ninth, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at James Collin Boulevard and Armstrong Park. This is a recycle, shred, dump, and cleanup event. Data shredding services will provide secure document shredding. We're limiting that to three boxes per vehicle. DFW reclaimers will be on hand to recycle old electronics, no hazardous waste or light bulbs. There's a dollar per inch charge for tube-style televisions. Republic Services will be providing dumpsters for bulk trash, excuse me, bulk trash. The City Brush Truck will be on hand for brush disposal. Keep Duncanville Beautiful will clean up after litter hotspots, making, excuse me, meeting first at Armstrong Pavilion, and then dispersing throughout the city. Also, this Saturday will be the Easter Egg Hunt at Armstrong Park from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The City of Duncanville Parks and Recreation Department has big plans for this Easter Eggs Hunt, and everyone is welcome. The Easter Egg Hunt will feature over eight thousand eggs filled with tasty treats and goodies, fun games for the kids to enjoy, bounce houses, music, and of course, the Easter Bunny. And then last but not least, Keep Duncanville Beautiful Community Cleanup will be Saturday, April the 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Waterview Park. Please join Duncanville Beautiful and the community in cleaning up the creek bank and wooded areas of Waterview Park, especially the section behind the businesses along Highway 67 Access Road. Ten Mile Creek, which runs along a section of Waterview Park, eventually dumps into the Trinity River and then into the Gulf of Mexico. Removing the litter not only beautifies the land and creek, but also reduces the amount of litter dump into our oceans. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Moving on to item two, a proclamation in recognition of National Library Week, April 3 through 9, 2022. This will be read by Councilmember Greg Contreras, and receiving it is Mr. Stephanie Lott. Mr. Contreras, please.
Okay, the proclamation, is it working? Okay. Proclamation reads as, whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, fueling efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who guide people to the best information resources, providing not only the facts, but also the expertise and services that add meaning to those facts. And whereas librarians continue to fulfill the roles in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, especially as our society is at a critical juncture regarding the changing information landscape and the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. And whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all. And whereas libraries work to serve all community members, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas libraries provide forums for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better understand each other and ourselves. And whereas libraries are looking beyond their traditional roles, providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new and innovative services that connect closely with the needs of those they serve. And whereas the Duncanville Public Library and its personnel have supported the educational, economic, and cultural interests of our community in these ways and more since 1955. And whereas library workers and library supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Therefore, on behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, does hereby proclaim that National Library Week, April 3rd through 9th, 2022, and urge all citizens to visit their public library this week, engage with their librarians, and explore the world of possibilities that awaits them there.
Thank you for coming and accepting that, Ms. Lott, and for Mr. Contreras, thank you for that. We are moving on to item three on the agenda. This is citizens' input. And I will advise that it is the practice of the City of Duncanville that citizen comments are not broadcast during election season. Pursuant to 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. And that limitation is any person wishing to speak is limited to two minutes, and those are timed by our city secretary. I do have some comments that have been submitted in accordance with the And I will advise everyone present that the executive session of the city council meeting is in recess. It is not closed. We still have information to discuss in executive session as a city council. And at one point in time, I will take us back into executive session for city council. Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the consent items.
Item 4A, consider the minutes for the March 7th special city council meeting, March 14th joint meeting, and the March 15th city council regular meeting. 4B, consider a resolution approving the award of IFB number 22-012 Forest Hills Addition ramps construction to North Star Construction LLC through the city's competitive bid process with an estimated expenditure amount of $217,685 and an additional appropriation for $21,768.50 for a contingency equaling 10% of the original contract price. 4C, consider a resolution approving the purchase of fuel products from Jack Ray Oil Company through Tarrant County Cooperative Purchase Contract Number 2022-063 in the estimated total expenditure amount of $472,780,000. 4D, consider a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with Professional Turf Products LP through Buy Board Contract Number 611-20 in the expenditure amount of $84,442.06. 4E, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire equipment from the New Fire Engine from Municipal Emergency Services, MES, through the National Purchasing Partners Government, Contract Number PS20040 in the expenditure amount of $66,401.83. 4F, consider a resolution authorizing the bid number RFB-22-0001 demolition of substandard buildings for real property within the City of Duncanville to Garrett Demolition, Inc., in accordance with the proposed pricing bid tabulation attached heretofore and incorporated herein as Exhibit A in an amount not to exceed $77,167.16. 4G, consider a resolution awarding a contract from construction manager at Risk Services, CMAR, for Harrington Park improvements to Dean Construction with an estimated amount of $288,000 based on the unit price. 4H, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Caldwell County Chevrolet LLC through Buy Board Contract Number 601-19 to apartment of six Chevy Chevrolet Tahos PPVs in the total expenditure amount of $465,898.
Thank you, City Secretary. If there's no discussion, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Councilmember Contreras. Council, please vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item 5A on our agenda, items for individual consideration. Item 5A, conduct a public hearing, parens 2022-04, close parens for consideration and action regarding the request of Pedro Espinoza, applicant and owner, to include a specific use permit, SUP, for a carport on Irwin Keesler Development Redbird 4, Block 16, Lot 3, more commonly known as 622 West Camp Wisdom, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. And presenting this, Mr. Jeremy Tennant, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Services Director, Mr. Tennant. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. Before you, as mentioned, this is a special use permit request for a carport here within the City of Duncanville. The property in question is located in the southeast portion of the Camp Wisdom Stegner Drive area, as just highlighted here on the screen. The property is owned SF10, single-family, as shown here. And specifically, as mentioned before, it is a request for the use of a carport. The request meets the area yard and bulk standards, also meets the material standards. And we received one response in favor of this request. This was actually approved at the March 14th Planning and Zoning Commission, and is before you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tennant. And this is a public hearing, so we will postpone or defer the questions from council until after the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to call for a public hearing of this item. And in accordance with our policies and procedures, I will call forward to those individuals who wish to speak in favor. And those individuals who wish to speak in favor have an aggregate amount of 10 minutes to speak in total. Not one person, but all individuals have 10 minutes to speak in favor. I will then ask any individuals to come forward who wish to speak in opposition. That total time in opposition is aggregated at 10 minutes as well. And at the close of that, then we will open it to public, I'm sorry, to council members' discussion of the item. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Timestamp is 8:08. So at this time, any individuals who wish to speak in favor of this item, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll now take any individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this item. Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I will take, this will close the public hearing. The chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close by Mr. McNerney. Second by Mayor Protem Harvey. Council, please vote on closing the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. The time is 8:09. Council members, if you have any questions or discussion items, please let me know. Mr. Contreras, I see you have some items?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. This went through a special use process, and I thought that carports, when they met a certain size requirements, were allowed by simple permitting. Was there something unusual about this one that caused it to have to go through SUP?
That I do not have the answer to right there, sir. I do not know.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not a question, Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any other? We have a second by Councilmember Bearcruz. Council, please vote. This would be approval of item number 5A, conduct a public hearing. Item 202204, for consideration and action regarding the request of Pedro Espinoza, applicant and owner, to include a specific use permit, SUP, for a carport on Irwin Keesler Development Redbird 4, Block 18, Lot 3, more commonly known as 622 West Camp Wisdom Road, Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Please vote. The vote is six to one in favor. The motion is passed. I'm going to take the opportunity to defer item 5B and move on to item 5C. Consider a resolution approving the sign control board grant of a variance to the Navy Federal Credit Union, allowing wall signs to be installed in the south and east elevations at 280 West Highway 67, Duncanville, Texas. Again, Neighborhood Services Director, Mr. Tennant. Mr. Tennant, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. Give me one second while we fix a little
Yes.
technology issue.
Rearrange. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Honorable Mayor, Council, again, I'm here to present to you the sign control board recommendations of city council. The first up is the request for Navy Federal Credit Union sign board control variance request. This is a variance request to allow for two wall signs, one each on the south and east of the rear elevations. Basically, the code section that has been quoted for this particular one is that Section 16A-22, which is basically prohibit signs and activities of such. Per Section 16A-22F and 6, where no signs of any type are permitted within the rear wall of any structure. This right here is a depiction of the sign. It is roughly 30 by 299 feet. It is on the rear and the east, as mentioned before, shown here. And this right here gives you a depiction of the sign, is how it will look in the area where we look at from the wintergreen side and also the south of Main Street side, with the line of sight depicted on the picture before you. Do you have any questions, comments?
Just one comment that I would have is that I've passed this building many, many times, going into its neighboring retail activity. And in fact, today, I passed it, and knowing that this was on the agenda, I took a close look at that building. And quite appropriately, they knew needed signing to be able to give visibility to the building as individuals egress and ingress into Costco through that entire parking lot. So it seems to me to be very reasonable for us to consider this. Any other discussion or questions from city council members?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Contreras.
The, I did some rough math on the sign on the rear of the building, which seems to be the point of this variance request. And it appears to be about 62.5 square feet. But on the resolution square feet. But on the resolution, it says that a resolution of the City Council of the city of Duncanville to accept and approve the sign control board grant of a variance to allow the placement of a six-hundred-square-foot sign.
That would be a typo right there then, as solemnly stated, yes.
Okay.
And that's something that we can request and amend before I bring it back to you if necessary.
Is this something we can do here?
We can take care of right here.
Yes, sir. We can take care of it right here, and then I can make the change right now.
That's even better.
Change being amended. Does Council concur with that? We have concurrence to make the change here. Thank you, Mr. Contreras.
Actually, if I may, it's like I did some calculations on that too, because I noticed that as well. It's actually sixty-seven by the way, so, yes.
You're challenging my math publicly, huh?
I just wanted to make sure we got it right, right.
You're probably right.
Because I did notice it as well.
Mr. Cooks.
You know, reference to Navy Federal, I really want to personally thank them for moving into our city. Anytime we see a financial institution moving into a, to a city, into a neighborhood, that's a sign of life, of additional life. And so I'm glad that we're able to approve the sign that's needed for them to officially open. So I want to just really personally just say I really love to see Navy Federal, as well as any other institution, move to our city, because that is a great sign of mobility in our, in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Cooks would like, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McNabb just lit up.
I was just going to make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have Mr. McNabb motion to approve, second by Mr. Cooks. Council, please vote. Thank you. The item is unanimously approved.
The second request up is that of the sign.
I get to read it first.
Sorry, I meant this one. I jumped to God, I apologize.
You want, come on up here?
Oh, no, no, I yield.
That's okay. Item five D, a resolution approving the sign control board grant of variance to AutoMan, allowing a second monument sign on the same frontage, to be installed at one-two-five-zero North Duncanville Road, Duncanville, Texas. Mr. Tennant, please.
Yes, sir. This is a sign control board variance request from AutoMan. This is to allow a second monument sign at the southern entrance. This is a request for an additional street frontage sign. This is coded per Section sixteen A thirty-one F of the code, which is maximum number one street per frontage. This is a depiction of the sign itself, as you see before you. It's roughly eight by two, eight feet, two inches by eight feet. This is the site plan. As you see, it's on the south, southwest portion of the property. And I can use my little pointer here to make sure that we all can see.
I don't think the pointer works on the monitor.
Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you. It doesn't work, as we say. All right, any questions, since that doesn't work?
One comment that I'll make, I've been watching with interest, we approved this particular project for AutoMan some time ago. I don't remember the exact date, but I remember the dollar amount, that they were going to invest, was somewhere around two million dollars to renovate this facility. And I've been watching it. They have been working on it. There's some paint that's been put on the building now, and it's really taking on a good look. And as Mr. Cook said, you know, any business that wants to come into our city and spend that kind of money for refurbishment of an existing building, we congratulate and commend them. So any other discussions on this particular item, Mr. Contreras? Did you do the math on this one?
Yes, I did.
I figured.
Fixing to be corrected again. I drove by there because I realized this was a two-sign issue, and this was a second one. The first one hasn't been put up yet. And I assume that one was permitted already, and it's just in the works to get it installed.
That is a question I am not aware of at this juncture right now.
Okay. The question that I have, and if you go back one slide, you show it at about, from grade level up, you show it about eight foot, two inches tall. And the ordinance says that a monument sign can be no more than seven feet, four inches, I think it is. It could be two. And so unless this block area down here is some type of a planter, and I understand that you could have a three-foot-tall planter, and that doesn't take away from the overall height of the actual sign. So the actual sign is only six feet tall. So I can only assume when this is built that somehow that HADI block wall down at the bottom is going to be a planter. Otherwise, this wouldn't, this would be too tall.
Yes, and as you see, there's nothing showing, illustrating planters on the sign itself. So the calculations actually include the two-foot concrete CMUs in there as well.
Yeah, well, if that's a planter, you may just want to go back and look at it, because I believe unless that's a planter, then that counts against the total height, which would put you at eight foot two instead of in the seven foot two or four area.
If I may comment, in essence, we are approving a variance. And that variance could be all-encompassing as well.
Yeah, well, that's just my observation. You know, I'm not, I did look at the ordinance, and it doesn't appear to have changed. So unless that's a, and I'm all for this. I don't have any problem with this at all. But on technicality, I don't want to have something constructed that somebody may have missed the ordinance requirements for height, especially when you're going to put two of them up. If it turns out that that block area at the bottom can be converted into some type of flowerbed, that buys you three extra feet.
And with that said, you all do have the luxury and option to actually provide a proviso as a body to specifically specify that the planter is in there. So that's something that can be included inside of the, inside of language as well. So that way, you're not assuming or guessing. We can actually make it specific that this is actually utilized as planning area.
Well, it was approved by the sign control board, and I don't know what that discussion was. I'm just pointing out a technicality that could create a problem down the road. So I'm not sure what to do with this at this point.
And the technicality is a matter of inches. I still believe possibly that we are going to, we are considering a variance in the aggregate, rather than any specific technicality on issues of inches here and there, if that's acceptable.
Is that what the variance request was for? It was for a second?
For a second monument sign, yes.
Second sign, and the sign as presented.
Yes, but you, I mean, as stated earlier, as, if this is a concern of the body, you can actually put in there that language is in that way, so that way, when it's actually reviewed, that it actually is utilized for planter space as opposed to sign space. So that way, it takes that elevation of height away from the question that you're inquiring about, sir, for that two feet.
I'm fine with that.
I'm not, I'm not the attorney, so I'm not going to ask you to quote me in that regard.
Well, I'm not so sure that the individuals who own the property and own the sign who want to put a planter in there. If they want to make an adjustment to the height of the concrete to bring it in conformance, I think that would be an option to them, rather than trying to make an amenity out of it.
True, but to add more language to this, if you don't mind, if that is a concern by a member of the body that would potentially have a yea or nay in that regard, you can include that language in there. And it's something that if they don't agree with, they can have that conversation and bring it back again. But if it's something that is going to hold this council at a standstill, it's something for consideration, merely consideration.
I don't think it's necessary to bring this back to us. I believe that you understanding what Mr. Contreras's concerns are, we are proving this as an aggregate of variance. You discuss the inches increments with the contractor or the provider, and make sure it's in conformance with Mr. Contreras's concerns.
We can do that as well, yes, sir. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody was in accord with it, so, yes.
We can always go less. We can't go more.
Exactly.
Okay, fine. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Cooks, and second by Mr. Contreras. Council, please vote. There we go. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Item five E, a resolution allowing AutoSavvy to reface the existing three-hundred-three-square-feet highway sign located at six-eleven East Interstate Highway twenty, Duncanville, Texas. Mr. Tennant.
Yes, sir. This is for six-eleven East Interstate Highway twenty, AutoSavvy. This is a variance request to allow three-hundred-and-three-square-feet of existing highway sign to be refaced, excuse me. The variance request is four-hundred, one-hundred-and-three-square-feet of sign area. This is actually quoting or looking at the Section sixteen A twenty-nine subsection D of the code, which basically specifies that maximum area of the highway sign is two-hundred-square-feet. This is a depiction of the sign. As you see, it's already an existing sign that they're requesting to reuse as is. The location of the sign, as you see, I apologize for the print on the bottom, but it's on the southeast section. It's actually circled in red, highlighted in yellow, if you can make that out. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Yes, sir.
Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Contreras, motion to approve, second by Mr. Koontz. Council, please vote. Motion unanimously approved. Thank you. Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to reconvene the executive session and recess City Council. Time stamp on recessing open City.
Mayor, we can't reconvene the executive session in here, though.
I can recess open City Council and move into executive session.
Oh, so we leave it out?
As I said.
Mayor, we also have a staff report, too.
I'm sorry? Oh, we can do that. Okay. Chief, Chief Rhodey, item number six, receive the Fire Department quarterly report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager. Thank you all for having the Fire Department for our second quarter update. I'm going to start off with talking about staffing. Currently, I have four vacancies in the Fire Department. The four being, I just added one because our Chief Ryan leaving us to go to be the chief in Corsica Ana. So with that being said, I do have to do a civil service exam to try to replace my four vacancies. So we held a exam on Saturday, February the fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and I got me a list. And we have run through the first fifteen for physical agility. And then we gave them their review packets, and they have gotten them back to us. And we have looked at the candidates, and we set up interviews. We conducted those day before yesterday, and we, or on, I'm sorry, the thirty-first. And I wound up, out of six interviews, I wound up getting two individuals, I think, that will fit in with our Fire Department. They just had to pass the final three testing procedures to go ahead and get hired. We also have a, four interviews tomorrow, so hopefully I can get me another two out of those four interviews, so I can get the Fire Department fully staffed. Then we have to run them through our training process to be able to go there and count them for staffing. Currently, I have two firefighters who are attending paramedic school at Brookhaven College. They should get out in June, which will add two more to my staffing, to be able to, you know, do a full house on our staffing. Also have one, he was attending, he was a nurse, and he attended a transfer, a paramedic hybrid program transfer. And he has completed all his skills and testing, and he will go take the national registry exam tomorrow. So hopefully I can get him included in my staffing within the next few weeks. We conducted a promotional exam on March the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, to try to replace Chief Ryan's position. We had three, two individuals, I'm sorry, two individuals who took that exam. And we had one that is in the process of reviewing his test for the civil service test, and reviewing some questions that he would like to have questions. So we'll get the results of those from HR in a few days. We're also going to conduct the engineering captain's test tomorrow to try to replace those positions that will promote up with Mike Ryan leaving his position. And then, of course, our Mike Ryan, he's our beloved EMS chief. He's left, and he's doing very successful, of what I've heard over in Corsica Ana. So he's going to be a hard person to replace in our department, but we'll get there. We'll do some promotional testing, and we'll get them schooled so that they know how to conduct themselves with EMS rules and regulations. Our executive assistant, Lacy Freeman, we want to make sure that we're providing professional development to all of our people. We sent her to the Texas Fire Chiefs Association Administrative Conference in College Station, which she said she got a lot of information out of that. We also sent Chief Chase. He's always needing education. We took him to the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. He's our second-in-command class, and he said he really enjoyed that class also. Lauren Sanchez, she has applied for a hazards mitigation assistance grant, and we applied for that back in January to replace our generator at Fire Station Two, which is the combination of our EOC currently. And as it's time, we haven't heard anything about the grant, so we don't know whether we've gotten that grant yet or not. It's still in the process. Winter weather preparedness and EOC monitoring, Lauren Sanchez worked closely with city staff to make sure that we keep our winter weather plan up to date, that everybody's very familiar with that plan, and how we work in conjunction with the rest of our departments to work to make sure the city's safe during our winter weather. And we usually go in there and try to do that once a year, making sure it's updated. And then it came in useful this year because of the fact we had several winter days that we had ice and snow that we had to deal with. So it came in very handy to everybody know that, that winter weather plan for emergency management. And then we sent Lauren. She went to Emergency Management Association, was Texas Leadership Conference, helped her do some networking and learn, you know, some more modern stuff out of our emergency management program. Our regional school safety team, this is something Ms. Sanchez has gone in there and really pushed for our independent school district and the city staff, our school safety team, to try and get, network with the school district and these cities to make sure we're all safe about school operations. We also conducted a shelter, a regional shelter training with the American Red Cross for the cities of Cedar Hills, Soto, Duncanville, and Lancaster. This is our second quarter performance indications. Like to draw attention to our EMS call for service. It's still up fairly high with one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen. And then out of the structure of building fires up there, y'all recall, we had a apartment complex building just north of the fire station on Camp Wisdom that burned, and since it's been demolition. So I would assume that they're going to go in there and replace that building. So with that being said, if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, Chief Rhodey, thank you for that quarterly update. And as usual, we do feel that we have the number one best fire department in Dallas County, maybe even the DFW Metroplex. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Contreras.
Can you go back to the last slide?
The last one?
Are all these calls in Duncanville?
Yes, those were all in Duncanville.
Any more comments from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Chief Rhodey.
Thank you, Mayor.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. All right, council, we are now going to proceed to item five B on the agenda. There is no recess of City Council necessary. Item five B, consider a resolution approving the economic development grant agreement by and between Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, perenns DCEDC, and Wheatland Duncanville LLC, perenns Wheatland, in an amount not to exceed one-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars, which is attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, approving a collateral assignment of deposit account and a secretary certificate of DCEDC, and in favor of Texas Brand Bank in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars as Exhibit B attached here too, and incorporated herein, authorizing an agreement with Wheatland Duncanville LLC for the property located at lot A, block one of the Wheatland Shopping Center addition Duncanville, Texas, as Exhibit C attached here too, and incorporated herein. And at this time, I would ask the city attorney for some assistance with this particular item. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as a result of the EDC meeting, which transpired earlier, and over the course of the last thirty days, we had talked with representatives of Wheatland Duncanville LLC and Mr. Monty Anderson, who is one of the principals along with Dunko, which is a partnership of which he belongs, which was partners in developing the Duncanville LLC. And we originally had set, looking, doing an economic incentive agreement with Wheatland to rehabilitate and redevelop Wheatland Plaza at four-oh-two-E. Wheatland to rehabilitate and redevelop Wheatland Plaza at 402 East Wheatland Road here in Duncanville. As part of that agreement, we are also going to pledge a certificate of deposit in order to help ensure that there would be adequate funds. And we originally sought to participate as a partner with Mr. Anderson by being a member of a limited liability company, which is basically have a restricted, very restricted role, and would act as basically a landlord in the project as being a part limited member of that entity. As a result of going through all these documents, it seemed to us to be as simpler and more straightforward as to commit the funds of $1.5 million to make sure and ensure that all of the development that Mr. Anderson had represented to the council and to the EDC would take place in a timely manner, and would require him under a revised resolution by dropping out our participation as a partner in the current resolution that the council has before it, and ensure that Mr. Anderson would, and his company, would develop Wheatland and make sure that the following qualifying expenses would be undertaken within the next 36 months. And that would include demolition, asbestos abatement, civil engineering, parking lot and road repair, electrical exterior, parking lot lighting, painting, landscaping, HVAC improvements, roof repair, fire sprinkler installation, exterior plumbing on the facility, tenant signage, monument signage, storefront improvements, and other tenant improvements, which would enhance Wheatland Plaza, which has long been a, I won't say eyesore, but an eyesore in the community, and really a blighted property. And these are proper funds, these are proper project for economic development funds to be spent under the statute. We believe this much simpler method of providing the economic assistance and ensuring that this work will be done within a 36-month period is more straightforward and easier for us to administer, and gives Mr. Anderson and his group more freedom to seek other investors and other financial input into the project without having to intertwine municipality in any of those day-to-day operations. And so, I don't know if you want, Mr. Garcia is certainly entitled to his five minutes of fame, too-
Yes, sir.
-this evening. But we would recommend that you approve the resolution with the partnership being deleted from the current resolution, and approving the grant agreement, subject to my final approval of the agreement. And so, we can get it signed, and Mr. Anderson can begin the process of rehabbing Wheatland Plaza.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and Mr. Garcia. Turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Gus Garcia, managing director for Economic Development Council, mayor, assistant city manager. Just, I think the lawyer, the city attorney, did a good job of presenting all of the information. I just wanted to mention a few items. As you know, we had a series of meetings, joint meetings with DCEDC. DCEDC has approved this as a agreement, potential for you to approve this evening. One of the reasons why this is being considered is, as you are aware, we have the comprehensive plan that identifies this particular property. As you see it on the map, it's located here, addressed in pink. It's part of the downtown district. So, part of our comprehensive plan, it meets four of the many boxes. Develop a unique theme and feel for the district, transition smoothly to and from adjacent opportunity areas, make walkable and connectivity both to and through the district a top priority, and identify key parcels for development and specific companies to recruit for those spaces. And this does meet those criteria for economic development. When we look at this property, we see Wheatland Plaza down here in the right corner of your screen, and of course, the main station. And then, we have our downtown area, which is per the Main Street opportunity area, our downtown area. It does create a walkable opportunity for the city. As you can see, these are just more illustrations on some of the uses in this particular area, Main Street being in blue, and Wheatland Plaza being in a highlighted yellow or green. And the area throughout the, throughout the picture there, which is outlining what a yellow or green is, what we see is potential long-term vision and the downtown area and walkability. This is just an illustration of the center, Wheatland Plaza, and this would encompass this entire piece of property. This is just an aerial view of the property as you see it here and exists right now. And this is obviously some pictures of the property, which constitute one of the reasons why the Economic Development Corporation is in favor of this. We feel that this is a property that has a lot of deferred maintenance and blight, and it is a central corridor into the city of Duncanville, and those monies would be spent favorably for this type of project. And I believe that's a main factor in why the DCEDC is in favor of this project and voted and approving it. And this is just an illustration of the rendering, initial rendering of what it would look like long-term. Obviously, as Mr. Hager mentioned, there would be some initial phases. This would be a long-term phase project, but initial phases would be the things that are qualified expenditures, which Mr. Anderson and his company have made clear that they're going to start immediately. This is just some renderings that he has presented before the city in the town hall to show you an example of some of the illustrations he's proposing. This is just an aerial view of that same development. These are just some more illustrations of what the property could potentially be. Now, keep in mind that this would be the final phase. Initial, it's going to be getting all of the upkeep, all the deferred maintenance, catching up with some of that, implementing some of the uses that Mr. Hager mentioned, and eventually be a place for outdoor activity and places where the community can recreate, shop, eat, dine, with eventual plan of some sort of main corridor through the middle of the property. And this is just some examples and renderings of the property. So, with that being said, I don't have any more to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We appreciate the provision of what the vision is for this property, and I think all of us are in agreement that it is something essential for our city to move forward with. Mr. City Attorney, there's, I do have one question in terms of process. We had anticipated the possibility of going back into executive session on this particular item, not on 5B, but on what's stated in our agenda as executive session, and now it appears that that is not necessary. But executive session is in recess.
If you adjourn the meeting after you've completed your business, then as a matter of fact, the executive session's over.
All right, fine. Thank you. So, as we understand it, City Council, that there's no need for me to actually take us back to recess and take us back into executive session. At the conclusion of City Council, executive session will essentially be closed as well. So, item number 5B, Mr. City Attorney, you mentioned that there are some changes to the resolution in terms of deletes and of the partnership, and some edits that are going to be inserted into the grant. Would you give us those indications in language, please?
Yes, for the benefit of those watching at home, those that have the agenda, we will approve Resolution 20-22030 with Section 1, Section 2, and delete Section 3. And then, I will prepare the grant agreement, and the approval is, since it's not an exhibit, I'll have to make the changes in the grant agreement, and I will do that as to form, but it will contain all the items that I relayed in my opening remarks. $1.5 million, the improvements have to be made by Mr. Anderson, that I read that laundry list of qualified expenditures, and that he's obligated to make those improvements within 36 months after execution of the agreement, which I will track you down tomorrow to sign the resolution, and then, we'll get the grant agreement over to Mr. Govan for him to execute and provide to Mr. Anderson, because I think he's closing on the property, I believe, on Thursday. Is that right, Mr. Anderson?
So, in essence, what you have just articulated is the motion itself.
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve, or to approve the motion as stated-
As explained, let's say, as stated and explained.
As stated by the city attorney.
Move to approve as stated by the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Protim Harvey, and a second by Mr. McNabb. Counsel, please vote. Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, also, I would like to thank Gus, Aretha, Mr. Govan, and all of you. This has been very taxing to try to get this done as quickly as we did. I appreciate all your patience. I appreciate your understanding, and more importantly, I appreciate your willingness to do the most appropriate thing as quickly as we could for the benefit of the citizens. And you ought to be applauded for that, because I don't always get that. So, I appreciate it.
For Mr. Hager, you have done a yeoman's job on this as well. And we know that this process normally takes a good six to eight months, and this has been accomplished in a matter of, what, 30, 35 days. So, to you and your staff, and the many, many hours that have been spent on this, we commend you as well. Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson wishes to make a comment. It's out of order, sir, but there can be a point of order made by any member of the City Council to allow this change as a point of order. We would have to vote on that point of order to allow you to speak, but the chair will entertain. We have a motion to approve a point of order to allow Mr. Anderson to speak out of turn. Mr. Anderson, you are approved to speak out of turn as a point of order.
You got two minutes.
And you have two minutes. And state your name and address, please.
I usually speak out of order without asking permission. So, now, I'm Monty Anderson at 100 South Main. And I just wanted to say for the people in the public and to you, you know, and to Bob, and to Gus and the staff, I mean, I've got to see things like this all over the country, and I've never seen anybody come together and do something like this this quick. So, it's just amazing. It's kind of a miracle that this happened. And so, I said that when we first started. I said, this will be a miracle if this actually happens, this will. And it looks like it might actually happen. And I, I just can't tell you how important I think what you guys did and the courage it took from both the DC, this DCEDC board, and you, and the citizens who came out to the town hall meeting, and the staff. I just can't tell you how great it's been to be here today, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. And for bringing that to us, and for your initiative, we thank you, sir. Item 5F, take any necessary action as a result of executive session. There is no action to be taken as a result of executive session. That concludes the business of this City Council meeting. Our timestamp for adjournment is 8:46 PM. Thank you.